Call the October 21, 2008 meeting of the Salina City Planning Commission to order. Is there approval of the minutes from the October 7 meeting?
I move approval of the minutes.
I'll second.
Moving second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dean, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, all three major items will be heard in the order in which they appear.
Item number two, the application PDD 08-3 filed by Larry Curran requesting amended preliminary and final development plan approval and a change in underlying zoning district classification from C2 neighborhood commercial to R2 multifamily residential on a portion of lots one and two, all of lots three, four, five, and six, and portions of lots seven, eight, and nine, block eight Georgetown addition to the city of Salina. The request area is located between Fairdale Road and Georgetown Road north of Crawford Street, but it does not include tract one, Quick Shop, or tract two, BWR Inc., of the Georgetown Village PDD. Continue from the October 7, 2008 meeting. Dean?
As we note in our report, the actual plating of this area dates back to 1974, and there is a planned development district plan for this lot, which is, appears on the screen here. This is the record drawing, and I think what is and why I say this is complex, it may not, from the perspective of the applicant or the commission, be viewed so complexly, but for a title and company, or a Register of Deeds office, or others, this, what occurred in 1974 was that this was platted into conventional lots. What a planned development district does is if it overlays or sits on top of those lots, so no matter what the lot configuration is underneath here, this sits on top of it. So, this townhome owner here owns tract in Georgetown Village Place Planned Development District. This Quick Shop is a tract in the Georgetown Village Place Planned Development District. That drawing is recorded in the Register of Deeds office, and that's how all the property transactions are being conveyed here. And what the applicant is basically proposing to do here is to wipe out the Georgetown Village Place Planned Development District and replace it with the Georgetown Villas Planned Development District, which works, except from the standpoint that these pieces are today not part of it, and they're going to be leftover orphans that title companies and others are going to be scratching their heads trying to figure out what happened to those. So, what a planned development district does is overlay building tracts so that the deed for this is tract one of the Georgetown Village Place Planned Development District. If that is wiped out, then what is it that they own? And so, that is what makes this extremely complex, not in your chairs where you're trying to recommend what the uses and development pattern should be, but for my chair, trying to figure out what we're going to end up recording in the Register of Deeds office in the way of plans and drawings. But what we have here is a request to take this commercial shopping center plan here and convert it to a residential plan, and that plan involves construction of, or creation of 15 townhome building sites, two units per lot, so you'd have a total of 30 dwelling units. Again, we looked at the lot widths are far wider than what the minimums would be, but the depths are not. They are at 85 feet, which pushes rear yard setbacks and lot coverage above where you would normally be. So, we've had the discussion, the board was in favor, or viewed favorably, the reductions that were requested. The fire department had some concerns, as well as the utilities department, that if you were having that type of construction and with reduced setbacks and closed quarters, were fire flows going to be adequate? That has been determined, that sufficient fire flows can be provided. So, I think there's been general agreement that the site is suitable for residential construction as a buffer use, and that there's a lot of townhome and duplex construction in the vicinity. So, that gets to the point of, there's two items that we don't really have, that you would normally have with a planned development district, and you have to have at some point. Right now, obviously, we got a plan here, which is Quick Shop, and a plan here, which is the BWR offices, and this is a box. We don't know exactly what's proposed there, so we don't have a footprint, a list of intended uses, a parking plan, or any idea of what is going to be placed there. And then, the other item that we pointed out is that this is designed to be a place where an access easement and roadway could be to come in to service this tract. And so, there would be 15 feet on this side, 15 feet on this side, that would accommodate a roadway that would come in. What Westar indicated to us was, it's all well and good on paper to call this an access and utility easement, but the fact of the matter is, if you pave that and have vehicles driving in it, we can't put our little green transformer boxes there, we need another place to be. So, what this plan does not address, and will need to, and maybe this is where it's going to get tight probably right here, is that the road access easement is going to have to come in here and make a pretty abrupt turn, or terminate here, because if you have to provide an easement here outside the roadway for the transformers, it's going to be too tight right here. So, what Westar pointed out is that there's no easement provided here, and they plan to come back and loop electric service around in that fashion. So, the surveyors have indicated that there is an established easement on the Quick Shop property, but they have not, if there is, we haven't found it, and they haven't furnished it to us. But that will become something that will have to be identified if you're going to have a two-way roadway, half of it on the Quick Shop tract. That's our understanding, that's what the intent was, but that may need to be taken a step further. So, at this point, we have a revised plan. It has addressed most technical issues, including fire flows. There is still a question exactly how these lots here, and how these lots here are going to be served with electrical service. So, we feel comfortable recommending approval of the actual plan here, only if certain revisions and corrections are made. So, what we have outlined for you on pages six and seven, for discussion, consideration, and for the applicant's input, is a set of recommended conditions if this amendment to the planned development district is approved. And so, we would have lots one through eight, and ten through 13, and the middle lots, one through three, they would be limited to construction of single-family attached dwellings, and you would have no more than two units a building. And then, the item B there deals with, again, how you construct the buildings. There's a difference in the building code between a duplex and a townhome. A townhome is built with the idea that you're going to have separate owners on the two sides. If you build something as a duplex, it's going to be owned by one individual. The, how utilities are done, and the fire separations, firewall separation, is a lesser requirement if it's a duplex than if it's a townhome. And then, the item C there counts, or recites, the exceptions that would be granted as part of this planned development district, the reduction in the lot depth. That appears to be a typo there on page seven, where it says, "Front yard reduced from 25 to 15." That should say 25 to 20. And then, the rear yard reduced from 25 to 15, and then allowing up to 40 percent lot coverage. Item D there reclarifies that there wouldn't be any covered patios or porches allowed in the side or rear yard areas, just because of the tightness of the site and the fact that we've got utilities back there. The other thing that happens when you get the curvilinear streets and a tight configuration here is that everybody wants two-car garages and double-wide driveways, and you have to make sure that these driveways don't overlap, so we've tried to get the engineer to do a driveway plan that shows woods and locations of driveways. And item two there indicates that there's an expectation that the engineer-prepared driveway plan will be followed, otherwise you're going to have driveways that'll crisscross across each other's property. And then, what condition number four there does is it takes the list of uses that are part of the Georgetown Village Place Planned Development District, and carries them over here. And the reason for doing that is that the zoning on these parcels here, and this parcel here, is subject to that list of permitted uses. If we were changing that, then we would have to be rezoning this parcel as well, and we would have to establish ground rules for how that would develop. So, number five basically states that the ground rules for developing this would be the same as this and the BWR tract, and that item six indicates that if we don't know what the use is for lot nine, then that plan will have to come back to you at a later date. And then, we think those four factors on page eight there do support a change in land use from commercial to townhome development. So, I think with that, I'd be open to any questions that the commission might have. This, I mean, conceptually, this land use and this plan will fit on this piece of property and can be made to work, but because it is so tight, details related to easements, especially for Westar and access, it's just important that it be revised to pin those things down before it's finalized, because we will end up with a drawing that gets recorded in the Register of Deeds office, and we want all those things resolved before the drawing is finalized for recording, because that's what's going to supersede the drawing, which I think, is that slide seven, John? I said, this is recorded in the Register of Deeds office today, and so, the goal is to come up with a plan where all of that is finalized and cleaned up so that we can have a drawing to record. And so, I think with that, again, I'd be happy to address any questions.
The, on that center lot there, the center commercial lot, I don't see that we addressed that, Westar's concerns in our recommendation, or in the recommendations here or anything. Is that something that you will handle with the?
Well, it's addressed in item three because the creation of the easements is really a plating item, but because item two deals with the layout of the townhomes, you can't adjust one without adjusting the other. But on page five of the item three report, one of the recommended conditions there is the plat drawing should be revised to provide necessary utility easements to allow rear yard electrical service to all platted lots. And so, rather than hold up consideration over that one technical item, we think it can be addressed as a technical correction rather than something that would necessarily hold that up. But I did, again, I wanted to point that out, that if this is a paved roadway that vehicles are going to drive in and out of, Westar can't put their transformer boxes there because it can't serve both purposes, which pushes Westar up here, and then you've got a conflict point here. So, the road will have to do something like that. But Westar said, as it stands now, they can't, there's no easement here, and they can't put their transformers in this easement here. And then, the other question is pinning down where the transformers are going to be for these units here, and it wasn't clear to Westar what had been provided to them to do that.
Any other questions of staff?
How many feet on lots seven and eight? How many feet from the building structure to the center of the road?
Seven and eight are... It's too small for me. I suppose we have a scale down here. Are you talking about to the center of Fairdale?
Yes.
You talked about these two buildings here?
Yes.
Okay, the proposed setback is 15 feet.
Yes.
So, you would have the 15 feet, it's on private property, and then Fairdale Road is 33 feet wide and a 60-feet right-ofway. So, you're talking to the center of Fairdale, so there'd be 30 feet from the center of Fairdale to the property line, and then 15 feet
Okay.
From there to the building.
Okay.
So, you'd have 45 feet.
Okay.
And ordinarily, the zoning ordinance would require 55 feet from center line, they're requesting 45 feet from center line.
When we had talked about this last time, we had kind of come up with the idea to put sidewalks on the east side of the development over there, and Commissioner Funk expressed his idea that the sidewalk should be over on the Fairdale side.
The only thing about that, and I heard him talk about that, is there is a sidewalk on the west side of Fairdale
Right now?
That runs clear up and down Fairdale. I think his concern was, but the Quick Trip is on the west, on the east side, so it's hard to imagine that this is going to generate a lot more foot traffic on Fairdale since everything is facing the other way.
Yeah, the, I see what you're saying, that there'd be no open traffic, people aren't going to walk out there and go back around, that's true.
I still think it's more important to have it on Village Lane.
Mm-hmm.
I will, and that is really a plating item that's addressed under item three, but the way that the subdivision regulations and the plating process looks at that is that it, as subdivisions come in, that you look at it in subdivisions that are creating new public streets. So, one way to look at it is if you had a replat here that didn't involve Georgetown Court, which is a new public street, basically, Fairdale and Georgetown Road were established in the 70s as streets, and no sidewalks were required at the time. So, from our standpoint, what we're looking at is if you create or build a new public street, then the question is, are sidewalks, or should sidewalks be required as part of construction of that new street? So, that is why that was the focus. I think because this is a planned development district, you have some discretion as to where, if sidewalks should be required at all, and where, but the focus, from our standpoint, is to look at any newly constructed public street, and should sidewalks be part of that constructed street. And you will recall, we had the case out in Stone Creek where we said we wouldn't have sidewalks on the street at all, but a sidewalk was appropriate from the end of the cul-de-sac down to the sidewalk leading to the school. So, you have some discretion that way, but where the plating and the subdivision regulations look at it is if a developer is building a new public street, should that public street include sidewalks, which puts our focus on Georgetown Court.
Well, I agree with that somewhat, but in my mind, you are creating a new street there when you are creating a street within that development, and I'll acquiesce a little bit on this one and let the sidewalks on the east side suffice, but I think that, you know, the comprehensive plan is pointed out, it was in the paper today about the trail situation that they're discussing for the city. I think connectivity is certainly a topical issue, and what we had talked about last time was possibly putting a sidewalk in that center area there, and the eight-foot required setback for the sidewalk from the curb and gutter. And as, I sent some pictures to Dean showing the sidewalk right next to the curb and gutter that they do in California, and Dean was good in pointing out that here, they don't like to do that because of the snow removal. It pushes, the snow pushes up onto the sidewalk when the maintaining equipment goes by. I can see that a little bit, but I don't think that the way our winters are, that that's a very long period of time. I guess if it was me, I would, the trade-off, I would go for having sidewalks at the curb level, but not my intention to rewrite the city's street plan or anything like that, just making that option aware to the other commissioners.
And we talked last time, when we were just giving some indication of how we would vote on this, a kind of a consensus among us, that instead of on the new street, it would, the sidewalks would be there on Georgetown, so that's still our understanding.
Any further questions of staff? Would the applicant care to address the commission?
Kelly Dunn, 2524 Berwick, I'm representing Georgetown Villas. I just wanted to thank Dean and everybody for all the work on this. I know there's a lot of language issues on this, so I know there's a lot of work to do on that, and I think we're in agreement with about everything that they've talked about. And the only question I had was about the, on the easement there, Dean, where the KPL easement they're talking about behind Quick Shop, I know the road is already in place there, and half of that road's already on this property. Can they put their transformers right on the edge of the easement and use the road for easement to those transformers?
Do we know how wide the roadway is in relation to the easement?
I'm not positive. I know when we did the survey on it, the survey pin was right in the middle of the road.
Okay. I mean, one thing where Campbell &amp; Johnson or Landmark could help us is if, on this plan, if it were revised, if they showed where the actual pavement was in relation to this, and then that would allow Westar to judge whether that easement is sufficient or whether they need some additional width there.
Okay. Because I think most of the time when we're dealing with Westar, they want to put their transformers on the edge of the easement, they don't want to put it right in the middle. That way, they can use the easement to access the transformers, and if that roadway was, you know, a little bit on the inside easement, they can put their transformers right along the edge.
Yeah, I don't think they have objection to having a combined access utility easement, but they don't, they want to make sure that they have a place within the easement that they're not in the traveled or surfaced roadway. So, if we could, if Campbell &amp; Johnson or Landmark could show us where, within that area, the pavement fell, and where the edge of pavement was in relation to that, that would probably tell the folks at Westar what they had to work with.
And I think, between Dean and Landmark and ourselves, I think we can come up with the language we need to put this thing together, the final pieces of it, so we're about this close, I think. And we, you know, everything else, we're pretty much agreement, and the sidewalks is a little bit of an issue to us. We feel like, you know, we're getting some setback issues, you know, where we're asking for the smaller setbacks, and then to crowd a sidewalk in there all the way around that circle, we feel it's going to take a lot of the green space away, and it's not going to look near as tract as if we just left it with driveways only and green space all the way to the street.
I think we pretty much agreed to let that issue drop, but we were in consensus last time that the sidewalk would go along the Georgetown roadside over there, is that correct?
We would probably prefer not to do that, but if that's one, you know, it's not a deal breaker or anything, we'd go along with that. Because basically, it's going to start nowhere, and it's going to end nowhere, and there's nothing.
Until, yeah, until something's just done with that.
And I believe that's all I got, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any further questions of the applicant? Thank you. Bring it back to the commission for discussion and action.
And the first item is establishing the zoning, the development parameters, and what the zoning limitations would be for the property, and then the companion item, the next item, is actually establishing the lots and blocks and easements and right-ofways. So, the recommendation that's written there is based on basically establishing the development stipulations for building the townhomes themselves.
So, we, in a motion, we would need to indicate points under conditions of approval?
Well, what would generally happen in a planned development district like this is if items one through the listing there would be considered conditions of approval, and those would be incorporated into an ordinance that would be, rezone this property. And so, the question, the reason those were inserted in there is that we wanted the commission to go through them item by item, and the applicant, and say, are there any of these that are not appropriate, or people don't feel comfortable with? But those stipulations, like the how they're constructed, and square footage limitations, and no covered porches or patios, would be written into the ordinance that would rezone this piece of property if those conditions seemed appropriate to you.
Yes.
Okay. You've got this well on hand, Wayne, just make the motion. But I would, I think we would need to add another condition then for the sidewalks, is that correct?
No, that would be addressed through the plat.
Okay.
The item, the companion item number three.
Right, okay.
But their request before you is basically a rezoning of the property from C2 neighborhood commercial to R2 multifamily residential. So, if that's what your, if you think all things are in order for that, then the motion or recommendation would be to approve the change in zoning from neighborhood commercial to multifamily residential, and approval of their development plan for the property.
With the six conditions of approval?
With those six conditions.
Okay. So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Been...
Been moved and seconded to approve, application PDD 08-3 with the six conditions. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries. Agenda item number three, application P08-5 slash 5A, companion, application to this one. Dean?
Yeah, this is the companion item that, again, we're looking at, this is what it looks like today. This, this is what's recorded in the Register of Deeds office, is this configuration. And so they're taking part of Lot 1, Lot 2, Lot 3, Lot 4, Lot 5, Lot 6, part of 7, a little bit of 8, and a part of 9 down here. And they are basically replating that, getting rid of these lot lines, putting a street in here and, and coming up with substitute lot lines. So this block today has eight platted lots. They're wanting to go in there and take that and convert it into 16 individual lots, 15 for townhomes, one for a commercial lot. Georgetown Court, the proposed street there would be, would be a public street. It would have 50 feet of right-of-way and 29 feet of paving. And that option's available for the, the short segment streets like that. Georgetown Court would not conflict with any other public street name. Again, Lot 9 has frontage on Crawford, but no, no direct access because access is restricted. And so for water and fire protection, they're, they're having a six-inch water line loop that would come in and, and run in a loop from Georgetown Road and, and loop back. And that has been determined that that would provide adequate fire flow. There's a sewer that serves these townhomes here. It comes down this direction and reaches here and then, and comes back across, but they're going to tie in there to provide their services. And electricity, we've discussed some of the questions or possible conflicts that Westar has identified. This is a pre-1980 subdivision, a Georgetown addition, and there's two characteristics of pre-1980 subdivisions. One is that they didn't require sidewalks and the other thing is that they didn't require drainage steadies or stormwater detention. So you don't see any stormwater detention allowed for on this block. And what the applicant is doing here is less intense than the shopping center plan. So this will be supported by the existing storm sewer network. As far as schools, this would be Metalark, Lakewood and, and Salina Central as far as the schools. It is in a neighborhood park service area where we happen to have no neighborhood parks at all. And so there is a, there is a fee that's collected on dwelling units within this area and they are located right here, excuse, here. And so this is neighborhood park service area number nine. There is no park there. So fees that are collected there would either go towards acquiring or equipping a neighborhood park in the future within that service area. All the easements and right-of-way, except for the, the roadway that comes over by Quick Shop, would be public roadways. The, the access easement that would be shared with the Quick Shop is, would be a private easement basically between those parties. And again, if the surveyor does have documentation that there's an easement in place across the Quick Shop property, it would be important for them to furnish that to us. What we're talking about in way of improvements, we calculated about 830 feet of total street paving. I guess this would be the, that we would, we would be our, our discussion point here. Again, the way that we feel that we are obliged to look at it is that, that Fairdale and Georgetown Road have been there for, for 30 years without sidewalks. And what triggers looking at sidewalk requirement would be the question of whether Georgetown Court would have sidewalks. That would be a discretionary item for you. And then if, if the, the consensus of the commission is that the, the sidewalks should be constructed on Georgetown Road and not on Georgetown Court, then I think we would need to spell out for staff and the applicant where the extent of those sidewalks would be. But the potential improvements that they would have would be constructing the street, any drainage improvements to get that street to drain to Georgetown Road. And then they would be responsible for the design and installation of the water and sewer line needed to serve those individual building lots. One question that we have and has not been specifically addressed is whether there were going to be any covenants that would be recorded with the plat or any type of architectural control or any private requirements that would be imposed on the, the townhome portion of the development. And certainly this as proposed is in conformance with the comprehensive plan, which actually does show this is more appropriate for residential than commercial use. So I think the only thing where our recommendation would probably deviate from what the, the commission's been discussing would be the sidewalk question. So on page five there is, is our recommendation regarding the final plat. And that's just to clarify that this is an area where underground electric service would be required, that they're going to need to do what's required to provide Westar with the necessary utility easements to allow rear yard electric service to all 15 of those townhome lots. Item three there, attempts to address what would be required in the way of sidewalks. They are going to need to get a certificate of completion, which means that all the improvements have been accepted and inspected. And then the, we're going to need a revised drawing that cleans up those easements. And then I, we are, it wouldn't be the applicant's responsibility, but we are going to approach Quick Shop and Booker Willis Ratliff and just ask if they would be willing to become signatories and just include this piece here and this piece here within that replat. And if they would, that would clean up this block once and for all. Otherwise, we're going to have a, a leftover piece of Georgetown Edition here and here and a leftover piece of the Georgetown Village Place there. And if, if they will, that would be great. If they won't, then they, they can't be forced, but we're going to try to at least see if we can persuade them to just participate by including that within the boundaries and then that would clean that up once and for all. But with that, we'd be open to any questions. And I think probably the item that needs additional discussion would be the, the sidewalk question.
Any additional questions of staff?
Well, I'll, on your, I also want to make sure this isn't a typo. It's your contention that sidewalks should be required on one side of Georgetown Court? Is that correct?
Well, what I'm saying is that the, and this, the item four, which is the next item, that is your, that is your classic case of a street that by, according to our subdivision regulations, is exempt from having any sidewalks. This street, Georgetown Court, is not, the way that our code is written, this is not exempt by the subdivision regulations from having sidewalks. But you have the discretion as planning commissioner reviewing the plat to determine whether, based on the configuration, the number of lots served, how tight the right-of-way is, whether sidewalks should be required at all or on one side or on both sides and, and whether those should be curb-side or property-lined sidewalks. So if you have a, if, if this street was straight and it went here and it just came across like that and connected Pheasant Lane, sidewalks would be required on both sides of the street and would have to be built at a time that buildings were constructed. And so because this is a short segment, it's, it's not a cul-de-sac, it's not a dead-end street, it's not less than 600 feet long, so by code it is exempt. And then the other thing is that by, the subdivision regulations state that there's a, a preference for property-lined sidewalks, meaning property line, that there's a gap between the curb and the sidewalk and that the exception to that is if you have lack of right-of-way or topography or other issues that, that require that the sidewalk be built behind the curb. South Ohio is an example of that where because there's very little right-of-way behind the curb on South Ohio, the sidewalks were put right behind the curb, even though that's not ideal on that busy of a street. There just simply wasn't right-of-way there to, to push them back farther. So your options as relate to Georgetown Court is to say, no sidewalks, sidewalks on one side, sidewalks on both sides, property-lined sidewalks, curb-side sidewalks. I think, and Wayne can, can help out here, but because this is tight and because we're trying to put the utilities outside the street, there's going to be a sewer line coming down here that's going to have manholes in it. And that's not a very good place. You, you would then have manholes in a sidewalk. And then up here, you've got a water line coming around and, and hydrants. So again, because of the tightness of the site, it's, there's not great places for, because I think the challenge on an inside sidewalk is to figure out whether it's best to be on the inside loop or the outside loop. But I think the first focus needs to be on Georgetown Court. And if you're saying that you're of a mind that there doesn't need to be any sidewalks at all, then if that's the decision, then the next step is, should there be sidewalks anywhere on the periphery? And if so, where?
I think I got it.
Because the, the sidewalks on Georgetown Court would be internal sidewalks that would serve the people that reside there. This Georgetown Road is a peripheral road, so anything there would serve people outside of this subdivision as well.
Well, it sounds like any sidewalk on Georgetown Court would be challenging at best from an engineering standpoint.
Would that be your observation, Wayne, that with the utilities that were fitting in there, finding a good place would be a little bit of a challenge?
That is correct. The proposed layout of the infrastructure that Campbell and Johnson has provided us has the sanitary sewer looping on the interior portion of Georgetown Court. There would be, I believe, we would end up with three, if my memory serves me, manholes located in the sidewalk at, at that point. The other option would be to move the, move the sanitary sewer to the opposite side of the street, but then we're increasing length of the line, adding additional manholes and providing an additional expense to the developers. Same would be true if we were to place the sidewalk on the exterior loop of Georgetown Court. So I guess, short and sweet, yes, it is a challenge to try to fit a sidewalk in along with the rest of the infrastructure.
Thank you. Is there any other question of staff? Would the applicant care to address the commission again?
I just wanted to comment on the cabinets. I believe we probably will file a small set of cabinets with the final plat. We'll have to, I think that's not due until the final plat gets recorded. Is that right, Dean?
Yeah, we'd want to record them together so that they were recorded simultaneously. So any, any transactions off the plat would be subject to those covenants.
Refresh my memory if you would please. Did you say that the, at this time, you think that the owner is going to retain an ownership of all of these? Is that initial?
Yes.
And then as they, they're sold off, then they'd be, the covenants would come into effect?
They would be. And I, that's why, we haven't discussed the covenants yet and we just, we want to make sure as far as the building goes, we want all the buildings to look alike, which, you know, the owner's going to be responsible for all the buildings. So there's not really an issue there. But if, you know, if we did, you know, eight of them and then it quit for a couple of years and somebody else bought it, then at least the covenants would be in place to, to go forward with what was originally planned. The other thing is just the sidewalk issue. We really don't feel the sidewalks are, are good for that area. It's, I think it's going to take away from it and, and, you know, with, with utilities that are going in there, I just don't feel there's really a good place for them. So that's our.
Except on Georgetown.
Yeah. That's all I have. Any questions?
No, I don't think so. Further questions of the applicant? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would any member of the public care to address this item? Bring it back to the staff for discussion and action.
Well, I would move the approval of application P97-oh. P08-5/5A with the five staff recommendations, with the exception of number three to read. Sidewalk shall be required on, from property line to property line on Georgetown.
Road.
Road.
And then do we need to discuss if we're that curb-based or property line-based?
Well, the assumption would be that it would be built as a property line sidewalk and there's certainly plenty of room for it to be built that way. And there's really no reason present to not build it according to the city's policy, which is property line sidewalks.
Would, as we explain, I know we talked about expanding sidewalks and we don't see any now from the area view, is there going to be room on these other areas for property, or property line sidewalks if we ever do infill?
Yeah, all, all the.
I just want to make sure they're going to connect.
All those streets, whether it's Pheasant Lane or Village Lane or Fairdale or Georgetown, all have standard amount of right-of-way, 60 feet, 33 feet of paving. So there's, it's not, they're not built because there's a shortage of space. They were built because they were optional and people, developers chose not to put them in.
So they would, I just want to make sure we're, we're not going to build one on property line and then there's no room on any of the rest?
It could easily be, it could easily be connected.
Okay.
Here and, and down to sidewalk along Crawford.
I believe the BWR building has sidewalks built in approaches already, so.
So they do?
property line sidewalk.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Then moving second to approve, application P08-5/5A. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries. Item number four, application P97-2B filed by Timberline Property, Inc., requesting approval of a replat of the Timberline Addition into 10 lots for single-family residential home sites. Subject properties, a 1.92 acre tract of land located on the north side of West Republic Avenue, west of the Union Pacific Railroad. Avenue, west of the Union Pacific Railroad tracks. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a, actually a replat that's being proposed, of a plat that was reviewed in 1997 and approved and recorded in 1998. And what we're attempting to address today would be taking a lot, that today is one large lot, and turning that into multiple building lots, a, the consideration of a dead-end street with a hammerhead at its terminus in lieu of a conventional turnaround, a revised drainage study submitted for this subdivision, and you have a letter there from Mr. Nelson regarding that study and its conclusions. And in lieu of a pond, an infiltration trench is proposed, and we're going to let Mr. Nelson explain to you what an infiltration trench is and how it works. And then we would have the needed drainage and utility easements dedicated, and we have one easement, which is an off-site water line easement that we'll discuss, and then we'll need to discuss the detention basin pump and pipeline design, and then get clarification on long-term maintenance. And we said that each of these items will be addressed in detail at the meeting, and that, that's what we're here to discuss. So this is what we have today, and there's kind of a concept plan in there, but, but the idea was that this would be one lot under one ownership that would have multiple buildings, and you'd have a driveway and some parking coming off here, and then everything would drain up to the north end where there would be a detention pond right in that location. And again, that configuration was approved in 1998, and what we have is, this is a piece of surplus railroad property, was acquired from the railroad, and it's 150 feet wide and 560 feet deep. And back in 1997, and I think Mr. Biquist can speak to this, but it was viewed as not being very conducive to laying out for individual residential lots. Part of that was the narrowness, part of it was, most developers like to put lots on both sides of a street if they're going to build one, so then the cost can be shared between both sides. But this has remained vacant and undeveloped in its current configuration for 10 years, and our replat design, if you could go to that, John, has 10 individual lots, and served by a public street. And then up at the north end, the drainage easement for the detention basin would be eliminated, and a linear detention basin proposed along the east edge of the site. What we'd be talking about here is, is again, something similar. The request is to have a street design that would have 50 feet of right-of-way and 29 feet of paving, and this option is available for a short segment street. The proposed street name is Timberline Court. We're talking about 10 individual building lots. Our subdivision regulations require that, that it basically doesn't use the term dead-end street, it uses cul-de-sac turnaround, that every public street terminate in a cul-de-sac. And because of site constraints, what the applicants are requesting here is a variation or exception from that, because of the length and low volume of the street, they're proposing a hammerhead at the north end, and they have configured that in a way with a size and radius that it does meet with the approval of the fire department as a turnaround place that could be used by fire apparatus or other emergency vehicles. So that is one of the main purposes of a cul-de-sac turnaround, is to allow emergency vehicles who might be responding to be able to go to that turnaround, turn around and get back out, and get to another call or another location if something came in while they were at this scene. And so the fire department says that that hammerhead as designed and proposed would meet their needs. The other variation that's being requested, and again, the applicant can explain the market that they're trying to reach in their, their design for this area, but the lots are fairly narrow, ranging from 52 to 65 feet at the corner location on Republic, which meets the minimum criteria, the R2 district, the lots are 100 feet deep, which meets the minimum criteria. But the R2 district says you can be as narrow as 50 and as shallow as 100, but you have to have 6,000 square feet. Well, if you take 50 and 100, you come up with 5,000 square feet. But their lot, lot sizes range from 5,200 to 6,500 square feet. So their widths and depths meet the R2 minimums, they're requesting a variation from the lot area requirement. There's a six-inch water line existing in Republic, they would extend a six-inch line up Timberline Court, that would provide fire protection and individual service for each home. When this site was reviewed in 1997, and then subsequent to that, it was determined that there needed to be a loop that would come up and tie back up to a line in Franklin, so that you would have, not have a dead end, and that you would have two sources of flow. So that will require an off-site water line extension up to Franklin, and the owner of that property to the north has agreed to grant an easement to allow that to be constructed. As far as sewer, there's already existing sewer in the back, I think John has that. Again, this is our property here, there's an existing sewer line here, and so each of the homes would just be able to tie into that sewer line. In 1997, and again today, we're taking undeveloped ground, and we're applying the zoning to it that will increase the development density and thus the runoff. So we had a drainage plan prepared in 1997, which called for a basin at the north end. Now we have a revised plan, which calls for a linear infiltration trench that would be constructed between Timberline Court and the railroad tracks, where runoff would be detained basically underground instead of on the surface. So I'm going to pause here and let Mr. Nelson explain to you what we mean by infiltration trench, and how that would actually work.
Infiltration trench is a device for the temporary storage of water. The idea would be that, that the trench would be filled with the porous materials such as the washed gravel, and would allow for storage of the stormwater runoff to be collected. While it was being collected, the soil beneath the trench itself is, has enough permeability within it for the water to soak into the ground, infiltrate into the ground around it. In the event that the storm event would be too intense for the, for the trench to handle all the water, the applicant is proposing that a pump station be attached to it on the south end near Republic, to where the excess water could then be pumped out and into the, into the existing storm system. It would pump on to Republic Avenue, and then head west into the storm system along Vassar. This is certainly a, would be a first for the city of Salina to have a system such as this. It's a, it's a type of system that's, that's been considered and developed through a number of communities across the United States. Iowa State University has done a lot of research on this. The APWA Kansas City Metro area has incorporated this type of a system into their best management practices for post-construction devices. Mr. Snyder and Mr. Funk are both members of the advisory board for the BMP construction manuals and runoff ordinances under consideration. So perhaps they'll be familiar with that also. So it's really a, an area to store water underground, allow it to infiltrate back into the groundwater, and then of course, with any excess, the, it would be pumped out into the system at a controlled rate. The key to this type of system is to keep trash and debris from fouling the porous rock, the void space within the trench itself. So it's critical that when the device is built, the precautions are taken to, to keep from fouling the upper areas of the trench itself.
What does this look like?
It, from the ground surface, it'll look like a green patch of grass.
Okay. And what is the, what does it look like in this area during a heavy rain now? Does it hold water there as it is now? What is our experience there?
I, I do not know.
That's not, the streets don't flood there, or?
No, I think the, most of the water that falls on this site today more or less stays there, or it migrates a little bit to the north up, up to that industrial lot, but it, it doesn't currently drain to Republic or get out in the streets today, and this is not...
Pretty gentle slope running from south to north, and it eventually finds its way to Franklin.
So it's basically like a leach field in a septic system, only larger scale, I would assume.
That would be a simple description of it, yes.
Approximately how big is that going to be? Does anybody know? Depth and width, I mean, four feet wide?
Uh, let's see, off the top of my head, and John, when you could help me, it's, I believe it's, it's at eight feet wide and...
Eight feet wide.
Five feet deep and 500 feet in length.
Wow.
What kind of a storage capacity do you estimate that to have, then?
Well, I believe that's about 70,000 gallons.
That's a lot of rock.
Be interesting to see.
Wayne, do you have any stock in Johnson Sand?
Not at this time, sir.
But you said it would be a good buy?
Yes, I would.
That is a lot of rock.
I guess the, the other thing that's very unique about this is that in most cases, when a development has a detention area, it is located on private property and an easement, and you have a situation where it's either privately maintained, in some cases through a homeowner association, or there's an option whereby the developer can pay the city an escrow or maintenance fee, and then the city takes over maintenance. So, so one of the things that, that needs to be clarified here is who will be responsible for long-term maintenance and at what point. So that the, again, if you visualize what you'll have here, you'll have a 50-foot strip of right-of-way here, and within that, the street will occupy 29 feet of that, so you'll have your 10 and a half feet behind the curb, while of that 10 and a half feet, you'll have an eight-foot area there with, with the infiltration trench underneath that. And so the, the two items that we will be working with the developers on are, one, what's, what's the surface of that trench area going to consist of? And if, if the city of Salina is going to be responsible for the long-term maintenance of that, we're going to want to have some input on what, what grows on top of that and how it is maintained, and then, you know, how, how you document that, because what, what we do now is that we have our general services department give us a cost estimate for what it would take to maintain a pond for 10 years, mowing, erosion control, pumps, things of that nature, and that's used to calculate a fee. Well, here, probably the only expense is going to be the initial planting and, and mowing, but because this is in the right-of-way for a street, the, the initial installation and the long-term maintenance will have to be a partnership effort between the city and, and these developers. So I think that, it's difficult to pin that down on the plat, because when you look at the plat, you're not going to see an area here that's, that's set aside for that, because it's just part of the, the right-of-way there. As far as natural gas and electricity, again, those are in place already, because all these homes on Vassar have, are, are served today, and there's an easement there that's, that's quite busy. And then the other thing that, that comes into play, and they're not particularly desirable trees, but most of those trees that you see in the photo there along the west will need to come out to allow electricity, gas, other things to be extended from west to east. Again, fire, fire protection, police protection are not issues. This is not, unlike the last application, it's not in a neighborhood park service area, so any homes that were built here would not be subject to any park fee. Again, Timberline Court would be a public, publicly dedicated street, all easements shown in the plat would be dedicated public easements. We're looking at their responsibilities would be a, the street itself's going to be about 557 feet long of paving. Sidewalks are not required, because it's a cul-de-sac, less than 600 feet in length, and they would be responsible for the design and construction of, of the water line in the street, and our estimate about 660 feet of off-site water line to reach Franklin Avenue. Yes, the other thing to clarify here is that, except for the off-site water line, there shouldn't be any impact for additional assessments. The only complicating factor is, is if they run this water line up here, and they finance that through a benefit district, it is possible that there may be a perceived benefit for that property to the north. So we can't say with certainty that there would be no potential assessments outside the boundaries of this plat. Again, we're not clear if there's any intent to have any private covenants or restrictions. But we have the handout up there in which we've summarized our recommended possible conditions, and furnished that to Mr. Biquist as well, and a summary of those would be that we make clear the developer's responsible for all public improvements shown on the infrastructure design plans, and that, that would include the off-site water line up to Franklin, that the, the final design plans for the pump station serving the trench would be reviewed and approved by the city engineer before any work began on public improvements. Our research showed that this property, because it was railroad property, had never been assigned a, assessed or a front-footage charge for the water line in Republic Avenue, and so city policy is if you weren't in an assessment district, that a front-footage charge is paid in lieu of that, and the director of utilities will be... charge is paid in lieu of that, and the Director of Utilities will be furnishing them with a number. But the latest experience has been less than $10 a running foot for that times your frontage. There will be rear yard concrete drainage flumes here, and we will want to have some maintenance agreement for how responsibility of that infiltration trench will be handled long-term, and we'd probably want to record that, so there's no confusion about that. Again, it's unusual because it is in the right-of-way. In other cases, where it's on a private lot, the developer will deed the pond area over to the city. In this case, we're already going to own that area because of its right-of-way status. Item five there just addresses the fact that when public improvements are installed, the engineering department goes out and inspects them and issues a certificate of completion, and that's what allows building permits to be issued. And then we just, we have a few items to clean up with the surveyor before this is ready for city commission consideration. But the, again, I wanted to re, repeat that the, the, the lots, as far as their width and depth, are smaller than you would normally see, but both the width and depth meet our minimum R2 requirements. The variation that's requested would be the total lot size, which some of them are, are less than 6,000 square feet in total area. The other variation that's being requested would be to terminate Timberline Court with a hammerhead in lieu of a conventional turnaround. So I think with that, I'd be happy to address any questions commissioners might have.
Item number four in your recommendations, that, that clarifies the maintenance of the infiltration trench, is that?
Well, I think, and I, they could certainly correct us if we're wrong, but I'm pretty sure our, the expectation is that the developers, once that's built, would like to turn that over to the city for long-term maintenance. The, the real question would be coming up with an appropriate estimate of that. And I think the other thing that would be, we would work out is if, when the street is built and that's still unceded, ungraded area, we would probably want to work with the applicant and their contractor to determine what that surface would consist of. I guess this would be a time for Mr. Nelson to comment. What is the top layer of that infiltration trench going to consist of? And is it, if you had two sides of the street, and with the west side not having the trench and the east side having the trench, is the surface or soil consistency going to be different on the east side than what we'd normally have on a street? Is it just going to be topsoil at the surface with grass, or would there be something different there?
The top layer on the, over the infiltration ditch would be a bland of, of sand or, or a topsoil. It would be something standard that you would be able to plant grass or, or other type of vegetation in. At this, at this point, I believe the applicant's engineers are considering just a fescue type of grass, which would then require just a standard six to 12 inches of a topsoil. Uh, there's typically, uh, this is a little bit of a hybrid infiltration ditch because of the, of the limited number of drainage ports into it, because the development is on the west side of the street, so there's going to be one curb inlet type of device for the water to come into the trench. During the construction of the housing, we would insist that there be some type of protection around that inlet to keep any soil siltation from getting into the system and fouling the trench itself. We haven't worked out the phasing of the construction of the trench itself with the design engineers. That's something that we're working on now, but, but we would anticipate that the trench would be put in towards the latter stages of the construction of the infrastructure, again, to protect the integrity of the system itself.
One thing that we've also thought about as a staff was if, if the city's going to be responsible for maintaining that, maybe we use that as a, a zero escaping demonstration area, whatever, and, and come up with a plan that's truly low maintenance, that doesn't require mowing and that type of thing, and maybe turn it into a feature.
So I was going to ask about the fescue grass. I mean, is there a reason you couldn't put, you know, buffalo grass or something like that?
There is no reason that we could not do that. We, we could have buffalo grass, we could have cacti, we could have a number of, of vegetation.
So it could be landscaped? What, what you're saying is it, it could be landscaped with plants and?
We could do something other than just turf grass, I believe, and maintain the, the percolation there and, and maybe reduce the city's maintenance by doing that.
Certainly you got a, a new, uh, system that's, you know, frankly, it, it looks a lot better than a, than a detention or retention pond, and, you know, I think it's a chance to, you know, show off something new for the city. I think it ought to be made nice.
Yeah, I think, I think we could work with Bob Ash and Steve Blue with our Parks Department, maybe come up with something creative there that's not just grass.
Sure. So, so Wayne, is there like a filtration fabric over the top of that, then the dirt goes down?
There would be a geofabric that, that wraps around the entire perimeter of the trench itself. That way it keeps soil from, or silt from transporting into the rock itself.
How big is the rock, just from my own? Are we talking inch or five or six inches?
Uh, we're, we're looking at material that would be between one to three inches in diameter.
And, and so?
And it would need to be a washed material, so we're not bringing in dirty
Right.
...rock to begin with.
So there's a curb alongside there, and there's just one cut in the curb?
Yes.
And, and so then, what does that look like? I mean, how does it?
Well, it's essentially a curb inlet.
Yeah, so what does that look like? I mean, is it concrete that then?
Well, it would, it would look like any standard curb inlet that you would see on any street.
Okay.
Have the, have your curb and gutter come along, and then there would be a inlet for what?
In other words, a curb inlet?
Yes, a curb inlet.
[laughing]
And, uh?
I'm just trying to visualize the, the water coming down.
It, it, the, the water would be directed through the drainage flumes in the rear yards and through the curb and gutter along the streets into a curb inlet box, a junction box.
Okay, okay.
And then?
I see, I get it.
And then, and then, once it enters the box, it would, it's penetrated through a, through, I believe it's a 18-inch perforated pipe.
Okay.
So the water is distributed through the trench, through the pipe, and then being as perforated as the elevation of the water goes up, it has
Yeah.
...chance to, to fill the voids itself.
I've got the visual now.
Okay.
I think this is certainly the definition of infill.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Any further questions of staff? Would the applicant care to address the commission?
Standbyquist, 2601 South Ohio. First of all, thanks for letting us present this. It's been a, a long, hard struggle. We've, we've worked on many different projects, and unfortunately, we'd get partway through them, and as Dean knows, and they would just fail for one reason or another. It's, it's been a difficult piece of property. I'd like to thank the city staff, particularly planning, and definitely engineering. This is, this has been a challenge, but I think we've got something that will be a nice infill project, and I think it'll meet some of the needs that I, that I hear from, from some of the city founders, that we need some affordable housing. And then our intent is to come in here, build 10 houses, approximately 850 square feet. At this time, we don't know whether they'll have basements or where, where there'll be slabs, but the, the lot is acceptable for basements, so we have that latitude. I guess with that, I would like to address a couple questions you may have. We will be filing some covenants prior to the final plat being recorded. Those we do have to develop, and that's going to be based a lot on, on what type of structure we actually build, whether, whether it's a slab or whether it's a basement, and how many bedrooms and so forth and such. But there will be covenants to, to protect this area in, in the long run. We agree with, with all of the, the city's recommendations. I have two comments. The main one, we would like to see if the city would work with us on this, and this would be primarily an engineering question and decision probably, and, and that's number four. We've got rear yard concrete drainage flumes as a requirement. Would like to see if we could go to a dedicated rear yard elevations like they recently did in Golden Eagle Phase Five. We'd like to have the latitude to at least pursue that, because this is, this is going to be an ongoing process for, for the next few months. Other than that, we'd agree with everything. And to put maybe you at ease and, and Dean at ease, our intent on this project is to do the project through the bidding process with the city. And so by doing so, then the city pretty much has 100% control of, of the project from, from start to finish. So maybe that'll?
So to clarify on number four, as I understand it, Wayne, the, the plans submitted by Campbell and Johnson show flumes in that rear yard area, collecting the rear yard drainage and taking it out to the street, correct?
That is correct. The current plan that Campbell and Johnson has provided would have a two-foot-wide V ribbon running along the west edge of the property, directing the runoff from the rear yards north to the Hammerhead and then across into the infiltration ditch at the north end.
Is, is your alternative stand to maintain that pattern, but, but use a grading plan and swales to achieve that, or is the alternative to use the side yards to convey it out to the street?
I think our alternative would be to slope the yards from the west to the east or from, from the backyard to the street and use the side yards as a swale, and that way get the water to the street curb system fairly quickly.
That's basically the same thing we talked about a couple of months ago with the?
I mean, I think what we would want to do in that event, which what we did in Golden Eagle, is if you are going to have covenants, help use the covenants as an instrument to, to call that out and enforce that.
Part, part of our concern on that was
Right, correct.
Like, how are you going to keep people from planting a garden there?
Right, right. No, I understand. It's, it, it is a challenge, but the flume system is, is also just another expense.
And, Stan, these are going to be privately owned versus rental properties?
Yes, these will be privately owned. They'll, they'll be?
And, and you're constructing all of them?
Actually, I'm not going to. My partner, Kelly Dunn, but our group will be correct. Yeah, we, we don't intend to let it, and we want them all to be similar, we want to, we want to have control of what, what it ends up looking like. So that's our intent.
Single-car garages then?
Single-car garages, approximately 850 square feet. A conventional home, only just downsized. And with that, I'd be glad, happy, answering any of the questions you might have.
Any idea of what these would sell for?
That's, that's a, a good question.
I'd like to know.
I'd like to know, yeah. And I'd like to, you know, building materials, if, if they could come down a little, but we think we can possibly get the, and a lot of it's going to be, depend on, on how much the infrastructure costs, because we already know the infiltration system is expensive. But it, it's the way to go for this particular lot. Um, we hope we can get them in for, you know, somewhere between 115 to 125, but?
That's affordable?
Well, it's a lot of money still, but in, in today's age?
You watch the news?
That's considered affordable.
Yeah. Salina's average was like 97,000 or something.
Yeah.
And I think so. Average home 97, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Above average housing.
But affordable.
But affordable.
I just want to say, I, I think it's, you know, very innovative what you guys and, and the staff have come up with, and it's a great use of a stagnant piece of property. I think it's a great idea.
It's, it's something we've been working on a long time, and then unfortunately, things just didn't work out. But I really want to thank Wayne, he's the one that, that went to a seminar and came back with, with this infiltration system. And that really turned the corner on, on developing this piece of property. So hopefully, if we go through with this and you agree and, and it works, it'll be something that the city can look at and say, you know, there's other pieces out there that the same thing could, could be done and, and
Especially on infill sites where you don't have the land area that you want to get taken up by surface ponds.
Right.
This, this could be a solution for tight infill-type sites.
Is the, is the rail abandoned there or?
It, it's not abandoned. They, but they, I have never sat there and counted, but I'd say one or two trains a week possibly, very slow.
Or, yeah, it's ra, extremely rare down there.
Okay.
Probably will be abandoned eventually.
Any further questions of the applicant?
Yeah, so anything we can clarify on your, your list of recommended conditions there that what Mr. Byquist is, is requesting is that item four there is based on the assumption of the, the design plans submitted by Campbell and Johnson showing the, the flume that directs water north and then back around into the street. If you wanted to preserve the option of, of having a, a lot grading plan, then that should probably be amended to say, "Construction of rear yard concrete drainage flumes or side yard drainage swales," and, and provide the ore in there as an option if you wanted to preserve that.
How does staff feel about that option?
Well, these are, these are much shorter lots, and we're actually probably going to have, the way this is going to be with the street cut and all, we're probably going to have some easier slope to work with then, but we will, we will still have the same challenge of you can, you can go out there and do initial grading and make everything work, and then you've got to have everything in place. It helps here if these developers are going to build all of the homes themselves, we're not dealing with multiple builders or, or someone who might buy a lot and build their own home. That, that will make it easier, but again, we will work with them on the covenants and everything to make sure that that, that is clearly documented, that side yards are for drainage and not to be filled or altered. But that, these are shorter lots, and so the water does not have to get as far.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I assume that you don't want any trees on that drainage system because of the roots, and so you would want to make sure that?
That would be correct.
Yeah, okay. So that over the years, seedlings don't grow up to be?
Or old cars.
Well, yeah.
Playground equipment.
Yeah.
Any other questions of staff? Bring you back to the? Bring you back to the commission for discussion and action.
Well, I agree. It looks good. I'm glad they're using the space and that ever-cutting-edge staff of Salina bringing new ideas.
Was that a motion?
I don't have the thing in front of me. Somebody else have to make it.
I'd like to make the motion. We approve application P-97-2B with the staff recommendations, but on number four, we change that to "Construction of rear yard concrete drainage flumes or side yard drainage trench."
Swells.
Swell, swell.
I'm sorry.
I'll second that.
The movement's seconded to approve application P-97-2B. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard. Motion carries.
I guess I would just echo Mr. Byquist's comments that we've sat through a number of brainstorming meetings where we've tried this site because it was what the railroad handed to people and it was 150 feet wide. It was a very challenging thing, but I think you've been engaged in what hopefully will be some cutting-edge decisions, and maybe this can serve as a demonstration project for other infill-type development. We will have our regular meeting on the 4th of November. We are working with the Cornerstone Group and also the homeowners in the Mariposa addition, trying to come to final agreement on terms through which they could extend a sewer through the Mariposa Pond and connect when we think we'll have that done for the 4th, but we're not sure. And then we have some applications related to future development west of I-135 at Magnolia Road there that will be on your agenda also. So Cornerstone is not written in stone yet, but we're working that direction. But the, we do have a hearing scheduled to consider rezoning of the southwest corner of Magnolia and I-135. And that will definitely be on your agenda, and we will meet at that date. The other thing is that the, last night, the mayor and city commission finalized appointments to the planning commission. We've had eight members, and we now will have a night. A resident that lived within three miles of the city was appointed, and Rod Meyer will be joining us on the commission as of November 4th.
Glad to have him on board.
Yeah.
I noticed in the informational section, there is a community planning month proclamation.
We just wanted to bring to your attention that there actually is, just like for every other group, and there is a national community planning month. Our primary activities has primarily been spent on efforts on the comprehensive plan update, and members of this commission have been involved in that, and that really is a community planning effort. But just wanted to provide that in there, that on a national basis, October is National Community Planning Month. One thing, and I mean, it's something certainly to consider, as part of National Community Planning Month, communities are allowed to nominate great places or great neighborhoods. One of the nominees that was awarded nationally was the Old Town area of Wichita, was named one of the 10 great neighborhoods for 2008 just because of the redevelopment efforts there and different things that had taken place to turn that in from what it was to what it is today. So I meant to try to get some information about that in there and didn't make it, but there was one notable neighborhood in Kansas, being Old Town in Wichita, that got recognized, so.
Well, maybe next year, Stan?
Timberline.
Timberline.
Thank you for the news articles. Those were interesting as well.
We do enjoy them. There's no other business. We are adjourned.